Alrighty, how's everyone doing today?
Very good.
Alright, I've got 4:30 today. If you would please silence your cell phones. For those who do not, we do have extra copies of our agenda up front. And, Ms. Shanda, are you ready?
Thank you.
Alright. Today is Monday, March the 6th, 2017. I've got 4:30 this afternoon. Would we, I hereby call this meeting to order. Let's rise and recite the prayers of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have our agenda. Mr. Avery Hutto of the British Church. Is Mr. Hutto with us? Reverend Dean Dyer. Reverend Dean Dyer. We're gonna ordain you. Now, we don't have that authority. Just a joke here. Dean, would you let this proceed?
My gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you've given us and the opportunity that we can live here in White County in the United States of America, the blessings that we have received, Lord, many of those that we don't even recognize. We do recognize the fact that we can assemble together like this and have these meetings and people who govern in our county. We say thank you, Lord, for these people who serve and make the decisions. I ask that you would give them the guidance and insight to make the proper decisions. That would be uplifting to you as well as our community. And, Lord, to pass blessings on each and every one of those people who are here and attendants and within our country, nation as well. All these things we ask from your hand.
Amen. Thank you, Dean. Alright, moving on to our agenda. Item four, consider adoption of minutes of the regular meeting held February 6th, 2017, as well as the work session that was held on February 27th, 2017. Gentlemen, I presume you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
No.
Mr. Bryant first.
Mr. Bryant.
Commissioner Hocken second. Any discussion? Alright, have you done all in favor of approval, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, under our presentation of proclamations and recognitions, we have the presentation of the proclamation to the Northeast Georgia Veterans Society declaring that March 29th, 2017, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in White County. I've asked Commissioner Goodyer. Commissioner Goodyer, would you take the lead on this, please?
Okay, we have a proclamation from the White County Board of Commissioners, Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas on February the 24th, 1974, President Richard Nixon declared March the 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day to remember and honor those who served, who gave their lives, those who were disabled, and those who are still missing in Southeast Asia. And whereas, due to the controversial nature of the longest conflict at that time in the history of the United States, many of the returning veterans did not receive the respect and gratitude they deserved for their service and sacrifice. And whereas, there are 2,086 Americans still missing and unaccounted for from the Vietnam Conflict, and their families, friends, and fellow veterans still endure the uncertainty concerning their fate. And whereas, of the more than 58,000 names on the Vietnam Memorial Wall, six of them from White County, Georgia, Raymond Allen, Kenneth Alson, Kenneth Samuel Gibbs, Harold Williams Schuer, and Charles Wayne Sims, gave their lives for our freedoms, proving once again that freedom is not free. And whereas, Vietnam Veterans Day is an opportunity to recall in the spirit of pride and gratitude the heroic accomplishments of servicemembers who gave their lives, and to thank all those who served our country during the Vietnam War. Whereas, the Northeast Georgian Veterans Society headquartered in White County has designed a banner commemorating Vietnam Veterans Day and will display the banner at the old courthouse on the square in Cleveland, Georgia. Now therefore, the White County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March the 29th, 2017, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in White County, Georgia. Proclaim this sixth day of March, 2017, White County Board of Commissioners.
Ron, do you mind if we get a, present this to you and get a picture? And I presume you're wanting to say something now.
Thank you, Chairman. All I want to say is appreciate you considering this proclamation. As some of the older people here in the audience and on the dais know that the Vietnam Veteran did not get a very welcoming Welcome Home. So we would like to remind the populace that they deserve their welcome and just remind everybody that it is Vietnam Veterans Day on March the 29th. And especially to the younger folk, maybe it would prompt them to say a welcoming to any Vietnam veteran they may know. But I, again, on behalf of the Northeast Georgia Veterans Society, I appreciate you considering this proclamation, and we will carry on with the banner if it's approved. Thank you.
Ron, let's get a picture with you if you don't mind. Is that okay? Can we present this? Ron. You start with David. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Bill, I'm sorry, Bill, I thought you were done.
That's alright. Got it. Thank you very much.
One down. Under item six, highlight the presentation of proclamation also declaring March 6th through the 10th, 2017, as Exceptional Children's Week in White County. We had the opportunity today to present these children, this proclamation for the, for the, this is not for the, and I say respectfully, this is not for the teachers, this is for the, this is for the kids. This morning, I'm just gonna be real, these kids' enthusiasm, their appreciation of not just anyone being there, getting attention, if it doesn't thrill your heartstrings or light your fire, your woods a little wet. These are pretty cool kids, and I encourage you next year when we do it again, if you have a chance, it was neat. And these kids, they just want to be treated like anyone else with respect. So, Ms. Shanda, thanks for putting this together today, and it was just a, it was a good little event today, and I appreciate it. Alright, moving on in our agenda, under present agenda, we have, these are items that we had already discussed at a works, at our previous work session last week, and there was already a strong sentiment and or agreement of where we were going on these particular items. And so, we're allowed to approve these items, as long as I have a motion of second, to approve these items in one full motion with approval. Item seven, consider surplus of the following vehicles currently assigned to the White County Sheriff's Office with proceeds to be designated to the Sheriff's Office for the purchase of vehicles. We've got 2008 Ford Escape, 2008 Crown Victoria, another Ford Crown Victoria, has a 2008 as well, 2004 Crown Big, 2007 Crown Big, 2008 Crown Big, 2003 Crown Big, 2009 Crown Victoria, 2008 Crown Vic, 2006 Crown Vic, as well as, and actually that'd be considered antique now, 1985, Chevrolet Laser. And that's a diesel on top of that. So if you're interested to see the share, it is a diesel. Apparently, they'll climb a tree as well. Moving on, item eight, consider continuation of the authorization for the White County Tax Commissioners Office to receive various forms of payment on behalf of White County and the revised authority to disburse funds on a monthly basis to the White County Board of Commissioners Office. Item nine, consider rejection of bids received for the approvals of Carolina Springs associated with $358,501 grant received, and it's called a Community Development Block Grant, CDV, which is an employment incentive program, EIP funding, and a note of clarification, we are rebidding this project out. It's not dead, it's just we're rebidding out the bids, can't get too high, just cutting it bluntly. Item 10, consider withdrawing the paving of Bean Creek Road associated with contract privilege awarded to Crown de Creek Construction at the amount of $17,735 even, and Stratton Paving, the amount of $27,816 even. That was total SPOSS funds encumbered, $61,636.85 including materials. Excuse me. Item 11, this was a cleanup of a last month's meeting on who was being appointed. Consider reappointment of Mr. Tom Carter to the White County Department of Family and Children's Services Board for a five-year term which is set to expire June 30th, 2021. Five is 17. That's just a continuation of that.
Yeah, it would've started, it would've started in June of last year.
Alright, 'cause I said it. I did the mouth of my head, and I was gonna say, we know, that's not five, I said four, but. In correction to the appointment, Ms. Judy Lawson to the White County Department of Family and Children's Services Board, which is to fulfill the remainder of a five-year term which is set to expire June 30th, 2019, which was previously held by Ms. Lanette Griffin. Gentlemen, if, if, what is your pleasure on this consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Nick first.
Second.
Mr. Goodyer second. Discussion. Okay, have you done all in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, under new business, number 12, consider approval of the application submitted by Kenneth R. Grimes to redistrict 1.39 acres of property located on FM Road, Cleveland, Georgia, which is tax parcel number 003-0458, from R3, which is residential seasonal district to R1 residential single-family district. We had, last week, we had a, a, a public hearing, sorry, just ran it stop there for a moment, public hearing last week, where we received any comments in support and/or if there were, happened to be any opposition, we hadn't either. This is, take the 1.39 acres, go make it R1, we can put a house on it. It's very simple. So gentlemen, without any further ado, what's your pleasure?
We have a representative.
Anyone from?
Ms. Grimes knows that they're supposed to be here today. I didn't see her, so I went out to call her. She's in route, she works at healthcare, and she was in surgery, on surgical team, and she's trying to get here as soon as she can.
Yeah, I'm under way to my car.
Alright, Mr. Bryant first, Commissioner Nick second.
I'm sorry, she's, I called, I went out to call her.
Well, I think the word's surgery.
Yeah, that kind of, I sort of got doors hanging around, but she got, before she got there.
They're gonna leave at long. Without any further ado, you've got a first and a second, all in, all in favor of approval, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And so I'll still let Ms. Grimes know.
She'll probably smash you up by the time you're finished.
Okay, we're gonna try and move along then. Item 13, consider award of the low bid received for the prepping of Stanley Nick's Road from Nelson Grading in the amount of $95,899.35, which would be a total 2,017 SPOSS encumbrance in the amount of $230,161.23, which includes material.
I make a motion to award the low bid.
Commissioner Nick first.
I need to know who that low bid is before I, is it Nelson?
Yeah, it says from Nelson Grading.
Okay. Consider to go ahead and make a motion that we award the bid to Nelson.
Alright. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Alright, Commissioner Goodyer second. Alright, just for those in the audience, this particular road, our goal is the next year or two, hopefully sooner, but to get this road paved. So we see an opportunity to prep this road this year in 2017, and as Commissioner Nick can attest, give it an opportunity to get the work done, prep it, and let us ride up down the road, work out any potholes, anything we seem to be doing, that'd be good.
Yeah, and I also, for staff, I did talk to, I've done my due diligence to Abbot Chammlelectric. Abbot Chammlelectric assured me that when the right of ways were secured, the stakes were put down, and if we'd be willing to maybe help clear some of the right of way for the power company, that that number was strictly an estimate and would come down. So they're kind of waiting on to know exactly how wide the road's gonna be so they won't have all they gotta move. Get back to us with them when you get all that staked down, get your right of way.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, have you done all in favor of the approval, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. After the meeting, I'll be glad to expand on this, caught these comments up here. Okay, moving on to item 14. Ms. Vicki May is our Finance Director, present our monthly financial status report. Ms. Vicki, get to it.
Tonight's report is on the month of January. The revenues that we received in January totaled $805,150. The expenditures for January, $1,505,82. January being the seventh month of our year, 58% of the year has passed behind us as of January. The year-to-date revenues totaled $12,299,352, which is approximately 76% of what we budgeted. And the expenditures totaled $8,863,787, equivalent to 55% of our budget, which is Of the general fund revenue that was collected, part of it being alcohol-related taxes and fees, the seven-month collection for this year totaled $79,555, which is equivalent to 70% of what we budgeted, which is the $114,800. Also part of the general fund revenue collected is the title admin tax, the TAVIT tax, which went into effect back in March of 2013. January receipt was $63,219 for the seven-month period. We've totaled $447,760, and that's equivalent to 60% of the budget amount of $750,000. This is graphed here again is the comparison with the title admin vehicle tax and the motor vehicle tax, otherwise known as the birthday tax, that is slowly doing away with over the year. Year-to-date, the TAVIT tax again is $447,760, and motor vehicle tax for this year so far is down to $149,791. You can see in the comparison, back in Y14, motor vehicle tax was $487,502. In 15, it went down to $376,134. In 16, it went down to $301,369. And you see, we're seven months behind us now, it's down to $149,791. Gradually, gradually. This next slide is all the items involved with sales tax and stuff. The loss, the SPOSS, the TAVIT. The TAVIT total again, for the seven-month period is seven, excuse me, $447,760. The county's portion of the SPOSS that the county retains and uses for projects around the area. The seven-month period totals $1,829,726. And then our loss revenue that's coming in for the seven months totals $1,478,374. The lost dollars, this graph is a recap of the money coming in each month for the period of, back to fiscal year 2014. This January figure brings us to a total of $1,478,374, equivalent to 68% of what we had budgeted. So we can see with each year, the total, the local option sales tax has increased over the last four years. Not the three years, it's actually four, four, three years shown. Hotel motel tax, the receipts for January were $69,390. That brings us to a total for the seven months of $563,052. That is equivalent to 84% of what we had budgeted. We did have a couple of months that we exceeded $100,000 on hotel motel. And on the SPOSS report, the 2014 SPOSS started December 2014 for 72-month period, January was the 26th month of the 72 months. The SPOSS receipts for January was $345,335. Each of the cities received $44,445, and the county retained $256,445. Our year-to-date receipt, not year-to-date, excuse me, total-to-date on the SPOSS, we have actually received $8,161,645. A grand total of $2,100,806 was distributed out to both the cities. That was a lump sum. And the county has retained $6,060,839. This here again is a running total of each of the monthly ACH amounts that are received. Again, the total to date is $8,161,645. The X does indicate that the SPOSS will end in November of 2020. This slide is a recap of the January receipt as it came in. Received, received $345,335. The county retains a 1% admin fee, $3,453, leaving a total of $341,882. And out of that, each of the cities received their 400, excuse me, $44,445. The county's portion of the central focus service, $256,445. We set aside $100,000 on debt service, on paying that back, and the project fund gained This last slide is a recap of the separate funds we have, Solid Waste, 911, Drug Task Force, and another judicial. The second to last column on the right, it shows their expenditures for each of the fund year-to-date. Your Solid Waste's expenditure so far totaled $33,456. That's approximately 44% of their budget, which is $76,629. With Drug Task Force, their budget totaled $886,791. They have so far spent 54% of their budget, which is $478,460. Drug Task Force budget is $558,065. They've spent so far $354,734, equivalent to 64% of their budget. And the Noda Circuit, their total budget is $739,254. They have spent $366,056, 50% of their budget. And you do see in the second column from the left, where it costs the general fund, the 911 receives $381,000 from general fund to aid their operations, and the Noda Circuit receives $185,426, their contribution on the fourth county circuit.
Ms. Vicki, let's leave it on that slide just a second. I know the Drug Task Force, they don't get any money from the general fund.
Not anymore.
But, and you may not know this, but, because they are a little ahead as far as amount drawn out, are they, certain time, like, we're revenue-heavy in the fall. Is there just certain things that may hit their budget that?
They have to wait on the revenues to come in, they have to expend it first before they can get the money back from the state.
Okay.
And from the counties.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other question? Alright. Thank you, Ms. Vicki.
Thank you.
And just to kind of, want a clarification for those in the audience who don't know, the county receives a lot of our funding in the fall time in the way of property taxes, and when are your property taxes due, November? So that's why a lot of our, the bulk of our, most of our operating funds come October, November. So that's why we kind of jazz it up in the fall, and we're expending as time goes. At the end of June, we want to see revenues above expenses, so. Alright, I'm sorry, that's a break. Moving on to county manager comments, Mr. Melton, do you have anything for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments, but we're glad to answer your questions. It's important.
You got something?
Yeah, I hear you, I know. I know that we've been talking about the Yona Preserve project and moving along with that, and we're waiting to get some plans and everything. I'd like to see our board to consider going ahead and, and advertising for a project manager at risk for this project, and, and so that that person could help to, with the planning and the budgeting for this project. And I'd like to see us put that on the agenda to get that, move along in that area.
Well, we're, we're a call meeting.
I make a motion that we go ahead and advertise for.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, gentlemen, to go ahead and author our staff to go ahead and offer bid, advertise.
It's gonna be a RFQ.
Okay, RFQ. Request for qualifications. Alright, what that is, folks, who don't know, we go out and we ask for bids, essentially scope of services that contractors can provide to us in an overall management of the project at Yona Preserve. What are we talking about? We're talking about building new ball fields and/or complex at Yona Preserve, it's been talked for quite some time. We're in the process of dealing with engineers as we speak, and I think Commissioner Goodyer's talking about going ahead and bringing the, if we can get that started, bring that person in to work with engineer, and go ahead and?
It'd take at least four weeks to advertise this and to get that done. And by then, we'll be, hopefully, that the plans are good enough shape that we bring someone on, they can start to lend some of their expertise to maybe be sure that we get a project that is a quality project in our budget.
Alright. I have a, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, second. We've already started discussions, but I'll say we're officially in discussion now. Just clarification, once we go out for these bids, those bids will be brought back to this board for official approval. So no one's chosen tonight, I don't want anyone to leave here thinking anyone's chosen. We're just authorizing staff to be going out for bid and start that process so that we don't lose another month. Because government has a tendency to always lose a month. And we, we'll be fall time and we're still waiting to break ground, and I don't think that's this board's.
Or the board's.
Yeah, well, it's not this board's desire, so.
Will this person be in charge of just the recreation conflicts or everything at Yona Preserve?
Now, this is the construction of the project, this is the construction manager.
Not other stuff that might happen in other parts of the park?
No.
No. Uh, board, any other comments and or questions, comments?
Need to move on.
We made commitments, we have to go forward.
All right, well, I closed the discussion, I got a first and second, and I'll keep it simple. Those in favor of, uh, authorizing staff to go out for an RFQ, uh, for construction manager on our Yona Preserve, uh, park project construction? Those in favor, stick by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks say no, all right, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Melton, any other clarification you need on that?
I don't think so, Mr. Trump.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Goodger, anything, Commissioner Bryant?
I'm explaining, you know, the only other thing was that, you know, on the opposite side of the, um, park over there, on the opposite side of Yona Preserve, uh, and of course, uh, there's some, we're going to have a trailhead and, uh, for the bike paths and everything over there. And so, um, I'm looking at what we can do to get that side over there opened up and.
Out the road.
Chairman Turner and I are planning on going, looking at the building out there, maybe this next week to look it in and see what we can do to make a building that will be able to service that area over there. Re, re, refurbish that building or whatever. And we have, uh, we have a, we have a preliminary cost of, uh, of doing the road in. So, we're looking at, to maybe open in that side of the park up over there too.
All right, yeah, I'll get with you, we'll get our schedule straightened out because we're ready to get moving on that. Anything else? The only thing I've got, uh, uh, Mr. Melton, I was going over the letter we received from the coroner's office. Coroner Ricky Berry, um, about his concerns about having to deal with the GBI crime lab and the, I don't know if it's backlog, the slowness, uh, the return, um, it's taking to get, um, results back from the crime lab and how that's affecting our citizens. And these folks are, um, already, you know, grieving already. You got, you have any insight and kind of share, kind of give a synopsis to the, everyone, what we're talking about?
Well, Mr. Trump, I understand when he sends, he sends, uh, bodies off, uh, in certain cases where they have to have an autopsy. It's taking, uh, GBI crime lab and inordinate amount of time to do those autopsies. That's my understanding, and he's asking, he's asking for some additional money in next year's budget to, uh, perhaps speed that process up.
Would you do some research as to, um, now, what he's asking for, I mean, all about, if it provides a better service to our citizens, we need to look at it. But also, um, and I know we're not the only county that's been complaining about the turnaround, I hate to use the word, I hate to use that in this situation, but the turnaround of results from blood, or whatever. Sheriff, do you have any insight on this?
Oh, yes, pretty much hit the nail on the head. We have to have these autopsies done for any unattended death or anything along those lines. These families are suffering, having to wait six and eight, ten weeks just to get a, an autopsy report back so they can continue on with their lives and, you know, put that behind them for different reasons, financial and whole mind and yards. So it is a problem with the crime lab. I don't know totally if it's because they're backlogged or, uh, and I'm sure that's got a lot to do with it. But, uh, I don't know how many, one examiner I think's all that got down there and used, but I have to, uh, take a number and wait. So, it is a problem.
But Sheriff, do they, do they do that in White County at crime lab here or do they look to those?
No, they have to go to them. Yeah.
It is not every state.
Certain cases, there are citizens up in White County. I'd like, I'd like the governor to put some of that money that we're going to spend for, uh, law enforcement then to hiring a couple more people for the deputy.
Are they short of staff, Sheriff, at the GBI, the crime lab? Any, I mean, I'm, I'm asking questions, I don't know the answer to.
Well, I hope we're involved totally in the state problem.
Okay.
As always, the, the answer we get is we're short, we're understaffed, is what the answer, is what we normally get down there. And, uh, you know, uh, they get a lot of money down there in that, in that area over every year. And, uh, it looks like they do what Mr. Goodger said, appropriate a little bit more for some additional staff to do these autopsies with. Because, again, I, we've had some serious cases in this county and, uh, we've just had to, you know, it's hard to tell these people. We don't have the results back and, uh, it's just hard to tell.
Mr. Melton, would you do some research? Just for discussion purposes, I know there's not a lot as far as right now we can do as far, but we can at least rattle the cage maybe.
I'll take a look at it and report back.
All right.
Commissioner Bryant, just kidding.
Thank you.
There's not a possibility of using like a private contractor, you have to use the state lab or?
No, we're actually, we, we already use a, we have X amount of money allocated in the coroner's budget for a private contractor. And if this situation doesn't improve, we're going to have to look at him increasing that in his budget. Therefore, it's costing us and the citizens to take care of it locally, whereas the state should be doing it. But it's another example of the state pushing everything back, I'm sorry, it is kind of a.
Unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate. I mean, they're going to make us pay for it to get a good turnaround back to our citizens because we're the, we're the boots on the ground, we're the ones who get hit up lovefully, they don't stay, it's just a number of them. Sorry, I got myself off.
Do we need to where that private contractor is or?
It's, um.
Certified, I guess.
Doctor?
Doctor Goett, G O G O.
And that's what the coroner's going to be proposing in his budget, is increasing more money in his budget for next, for that very reason. So, and this would be for, specifically for White County citizen situation. It's, it's.
But not everybody.
Yeah.
Special.
Uh, sorry, Ms. Grimes, guess what? No, 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 it's done, done! We're done, it's over, we're done! Sorry, I wasn't trying to scare you.
Before you started for you, he booed against you though.
That wasn't mine.
That was a lie?
That wasn't a lie?
It was a lie. It was unanimous vote.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
We can make this an offer if you like and ask how you get this, it's a lie. Wouldn't you believe that way, you know that, don't you? But you're good, it's done, it's over.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Now, well, that's absolutely, yeah, yeah, sorry, have a good day, okay? Thank you, and thanks for what you're doing, helping those folks out too in your job. All right, sorry about that, let's, let's, let's bring her back in here. In that same vein, uh, Mr. Melton, I know we've had discussions about, uh, at the library, putting in a, uh, one or possibly two, ADA, uh, compatible doors like we've done here at the senior center. And I think this is, it's, the building was built nineteen eighty, so it's thirty-seven years in making here. So, I think those doors need to be improved, um, uh, the emails sent to you this afternoon, have you had a chance to work on that yet?
Yes, and they said they would pick up the difference.
Okay. You know, what we've, uh, what we've got, because we were looking at doing one, there's two doors. You have two in, uh, you got your main entrance and the door going into the actual room itself. And we were looking at proposing the board of commissioners, uh, the, what was the estimate we got, seven thousand?
Seventy-eight eighty-one.
Okay, seventy-eight eighty-one for both doors. So, thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred dollars plus tax, or not, no tax in that. We as commissioners will fund up to five thousand, and Friends of the Library will take care of the two thousand, something like difference. And so, uh, I'll just be blunt, Mr. Melton, if you get started on that and any documentation you need to bring back to us as the board to approve?
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion to approve?
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of, ah, we're on the roll here, uh, motion to approve the purchase of, uh, two doors, ADA compatible doors, uh, of the board of commissioners, spending up to five thousand dollars difference. And I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this, um, and I brought it up.
Twenty-eight eighty-one.
Twenty-eight eighty-one. Uh, will be funded from the Friends of the Library, um. Again, Commissioner Goodger first, Commissioner Diggs second.
Wash, correct?
Oh, Commissioner Hoffel. He didn't hear what I told him. Mr. Melton, what, what's your suggestions on our funding source? SPOSS or doing it out of a contingency?
Oh, yeah, contingency.
Okay. I'm going with that recommendation. If something changes and you see that needs to be changed, let us know. Um, I'll make it short, sweet and simple. Close discussion, all in favor, said most, stick by by saying aye. Folks say no, motion carries, thank you, surprise. Well, that's, that's Christmas time around here, um, sorry about that. Enough of that. Other comments, this is the time we open the floor up, uh, to give anyone opportunity, anything they'd like to say for the good of the cause. If, uh, you've got something, raise your hand, I'll get to you as quickly as I can. If you would, uh, state your name and address for the record so we can have that, uh, and the official doc, documents from the county. If you've got something, raise your hand, I'll get to you. Mr. Melton?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board of commissioners? I got a dumb question. Russell Mobley, five-seven-zero, Mossy Cove Road, off of Bean Creek. My dumb question for today is, I, I was listening to your, uh, discussion of the state, uh, not, not, uh, fulfilling its fiduciary responsibilities in funding a service that's necessary for the safety of our local citizens. I'm not that familiar with how, uh, the, the intergovernmental relationship is. And, but I did, uh, note that you talked about having to fund from local funds services that, that, what I understand, are required to be provided by the state. Is it possible for us to provide the service and send them a bill?
Would I love to, absolutely.
No, I mean, is it, is it, is that just a pipe dream or what?
I'm going to raise a pipe dream. I don't know, I mean, uh.
But on the other hand, probably, I would help correct, I mean, they're, when we, when Ricky sending one down there, they're not charging us. It's just, it's the length of the time.
No, I understand, you know.
And this is what he's asking, I try to speed it up just for, you know, the citizens there.
No, I understand.
But, hey, we, we, we know what you're talking about, I mean, we feel the pain, so.
Russell, if there's any way that we could get compensated, we will try.
Right.
But, I'm going to be real, I don't see it happening.
And I know statewide, I've, I've seen news reports similar, and I'm also seeing the spokesperson for the GBI indicate, from, from the lab, indicating that, well, it's, it's a staffing issue, and we're expecting funds to be coming in, I don't know.
And it never happens.
Yeah, right.
It, it just keeps charting.
On it, I ask.
Fair enough, I hope you don't, I hope you don't mind me being.
No, no, not at all.
Uh, we'd love to, but also, I'm not dumb either, I, I, I am. But, I'm sorry, moving on, Ms. Judy?
Judy Lovell, three-four-one, West Kittle Street, I'm representing, representing White County Historical Society. We continue to have, um, tour groups to come in. So we're opening on some days when we're normally not open. In, um, other words, today, we had a tour group from, um, senior citizens mostly from, uh, Takoa. And they were from, actually, they were, uh, Takoa Housing Authority group. So, just wanted you to know that we are serving people not only here in White County, but we are serving tourists from all over the place that continue to come in, and we're very proud of it and thank you for support you give us.
Well, for what it's worth, I actually saw Ms. Cox taking them on a tour, walking around the grounds as I was coming through for lunch today.
She was doing that.
So, I, I saw it, it was real.
We got the newspaper to come and get you.
Probably a dozen folks, I'm, I'm guessing, when I wrote by real quick, maybe a dozen, I didn't recognize any of that Ms. Cox, so.
I think so, I think about fourteen people and all, with their, with the leader.
Judy, what's the status of the potter, the potter they're going to put on the square?
I'm sorry?
What is the status of the statue of the potter they're going to put on the square?
Well, we have collected, uh, almost, um, more than half the funds that it will cost to put it on. So we're up to about seventeen thousand dollars collected. Anybody interested will be glad to take your donation at any time. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I live in the mall, three, five-seventy Mossy Cove Road in Salt Lake. I don't understand about, I mean, this is not a hostile question, it's just information. What, what was the number, the, the withdrawal of the bid about paving Bean Creek Road? I just didn't understand what that meant.
Part of what we was going to do, we were looking at the three fifty-six down to the stop sign, just that stick there, the top side, way over there from y'all. And it, after talking to the people, there was not enough interest in it, so I should, we pulled out the, uh, what's the total? Sixty-something thousand we was going to spend for that, and then that's where we put it back on the other road earlier. So that's what that was, we was talking about doing it, it just didn't work out.
Fine with me, I don't want it paid either, but just curious, I didn't know. Thank you.
So you're not a house to buy, is your house?
No, no, not on this topic.
All right, not on this topic. All right, sorry, uh, okay. Uh, I'm sorry, we do have an executive session, we've got to go into it in a few minutes, does anybody have anything else?
I mean, FYI, uh, the Stanley Mick Road, y'all discussed earlier. There's about eighty-plus-year-old woman up there, y'all just made her day, because she told me the other day she didn't think she'd ever live to see that road done. You know, I'm going to tell her, y'all got it started.
Good things where you get the lease, they do help you live on it up where they was running.
Please hope for us, yeah, sure.
One thing, at our next meeting, um, conversation with sheriff, because I'm not going to hang you out, sheriff, on this. As you, as you're aware, uh, the sheriff had, uh, some deputies that were involved in a wreck, not of their fault, okay? Uh, they were coming back from Banks Cross, coming through Banks Crosses from training. And, uh, their car was towed, simple as that, so everybody's okay. So, uh, the sheriff's still going to need to come for us.
So on three sixty-five?
That's on Banks Crosses, down on four forty-one.
Oh.
They were in the police cad, we down there, coming back in the police cad. They would enjoy riding, but we was just coming back in the police cad.
I said that, yeah, I think he felt, he, he felt some conviction or something there for a minute, but, uh, let's put that on the, uh, our next meeting and, uh, get the information from the sheriff. If that's good for you, Sheriff, we'll, we'll get you covered.
We have all these ground dicks available.
Looks like you put all them together, make at least one.
All right, I'm going to do this, okay, we're, we're getting, we're getting off focus here. Anyone else's participation before I close this section out? All right? Under, uh, under our upcoming announcements, um, gentlemen, how's your schedule look? I understand that, which, we've got spring break the week of April the third. Um, a lot of folks are going to be out of town that week of April third. How do you guys feel about doing a combined work session and called meeting on March twenty-seventh at four-thirty? To do a combined meeting?
Sounds good.
I guess if something comes up with an office, I can, I can, I can.
Something comes up, we're not just having another meeting there for her.
Mr. Melton, I do realize you're going to be out of town, but I think we'll have the agenda set before you leave. Ms. Shannon, you'll be here, correct?
I will.
Okay, all right. So if you'll make note, please, in the record that we'll have a combined, uh, work session and regular meeting on Monday, March twenty-seventh at four thirty PM, please. All right. That's all I've got. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to enter an executive session? Commissioner Hoffel first.
Second.
Commissioner Goodger second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, folks say no. All right, motion carries. Folks, we're officially in the executive session, I wish you all a good evening. Thank you for your time and I appreciate it. Thank you.